All right, we are going to go ahead and call our final daytime workshop meeting to order on August 11th, 2025. Thank you, our wonderful legislators, laters.
Yeah.
And it is 12 o'clock on the dot, so it's also August 11th, 2025. First, we have our citizens' comments on agenda items. No one signed up for that, so we'll, as you saw, we have good things tomorrow night. Those are just there for you to look at. And we have, the next item is the information items. First, and they are written, so we have the tax report, analysis of delinquent taxes and services, the monthly financial report for July 2025, the nursing report, the child nutrition summer 2025 report, the quarterly surplus report, safety report, technology report, transportation report, the board activity calendar for August and September 2025. And we have a personnel update, new hires for this school year. We have a list of resignations, personnel vacancies. We have the review of CCISD's 2025-2026 employee handbook, the review of CCISD's 2025-2026 student handbook. I'm sure you have questions, and for that, I will let Dr. Hawkins take over. So, questions on any of those items?
Sure. Not a lot of this has changed since the draft of the agenda was constructed. Just running through some of the things that are on here, though. For H, you know, there's going to be a massive disruption in transportation with the amount of buses going to Fairview and to Mark Walker. And so, we know that. In the podcast, I just kind of asked for everybody's grace in that matter. Those routes will smooth out. You know, we'll get those things, taking care of them. But the first week to two of bus and car rider lines will be different. And there will be a different volume of car rider lines at the two host campuses of Fairview and Mark Walker. And so, you know, I know transportation is not from a lack of work, but I think it's important that we remember that we don't, we're not a private school. And so, we don't get to cut kids off. You know, I mean, it, August the 1st, if you haven't took care of all your stuff and the, and the private school took you in, then they don't have to take you in. And so, we take kids all through the year. And so, especially when parents wait to the very end, it constrains our ability to plan. When we can prepare, things work a whole lot smoother. I think there is somewhere around 600, there's around 600 students that have not been verified for enrollment, that are still sitting out there. So, we have to plan for those kids. We don't know whether they've left. We don't know whether they're going to stay. And so, there's a tremendous strain on the system there. And, and I can say this, that that's probably percentage-wise, less than my former district. But at the same time, it does constrain the ability to work smoothly on day one. And so, that's our goal over the next three years as the start of school, trying to get it as seamless and smooth as possible. And obviously, the Williams Leisure was something that, you know, we really couldn't, we really couldn't plan for. Other things that are notable, that we really can't necessarily plan for, is the increase of students coming into the district. You know, we, we have ended the school year at like 7,795 students. And as of right now, we're sitting at about 79, 88, okay? 389 of those are new students.
Wow.
And so, we are getting, you know, we've had a decline of enrollment. And now, because of dynamics, let's just leave it at the dynamic deal, that there are, there are students that are coming in at a greater rate than are graduating or moving somewhere else in the district. And so, that's a good problem to have. But nonetheless, you know, there will probably continue to be new faces along the lines. And, you know, here's the deal, in different neighborhoods, it affects different campuses differently. Because we've got some campuses that are at capacity. You know, House Creek's at capacity. Cove High is at capacity. And so, doesn't matter if they're at capacity, though. But what it, what it does say is, over the next little while, at some point in the next 12 months, we've got to look at some zoning, too, to kind of alleviate some of these issues that we're having. But, as you see, there's board goals there, and, and we're working through the goals that we have. And so, I'm sure that if we move into next year, we can set goals and, and kind of focus on those things. One other thing here in resignations, personnel vacancies and all that, that I would definitely point out, is where is the threshold with the ability to hire certified teachers? I think it's always important to look at that from the standpoint of, we need to know. And then, what can we do to change that? Dr. Shuck is working with, through his area in the HR department to, to kind of revamp the way that HR functions, to make it more robust for onboarding of staff and, and to recruit staff into the district. But those of you who came to the, meet the teacher, there were 58 teachers that were there. 53 of those were actually new this year. 58 was, was part of the flow-through from spring that came in. But of the 53, eight of those are RISE teachers. So, that kind of gives you some information about where that watermark is, your high-level mark. You, you were able to hire 53 teachers, but, you know, eight over the watermark of being able to hire certified teachers. And so, doesn't mean anything, other than that we want to continue to push that watermark up and to hire more and more certified teachers, because House Bill 2 requires us to. The, the current RISE program that we have will have to change because state law changed. And there are some things that, that we can do to improve that. Just like Amanda has some scores here for you, and some things that they are where they are, and we will work to improve those things. But here's the point I think that we should drive home, is this. It, it's not a matter of not being able to hire staff on our end. You know, if there was a line of staff, we would certainly welcome staff, you know? And so, it's not like we're intentionally not wanting to do that. And I think that was kind of the intent put into the wall, that hey, we're not really wanting to do this. And that's not the case at all. It's economics, supply and demand, and it's driving those things. Lastly, our, before I go to that, I is, let me back up one. I is, Ms. Manning had, had requested that we put the board calendar on there for August and September, because it is quite busy. And so, that's on there for you to look at. And then, K and L are the employee and student handbook. And to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing different in this other than what was legislated and came down from the TASB model handbook for students and employees, with the exception of the employee dress code. And, and that is, as, as you know, what we've tried to do is to ensure branding and the unification of our staff. We, we want to unify our district, we want to enter, unify the community around that dog. And so, we've relaxed some things in there, but we've also put some things in there that we will hold, you know, to accountability, too. Because if, if we don't, then there's really no commitment to what we're doing. We've got to make sure that we're committed to it. I think that it is very much viable. We, we can have a professional look, a look that like we're all united around one thing, and present a good image for our community and for the profession. So, those are the only things that I know of that are in there that was kind of volunteer, just trying to tweak what we're doing. Whatever we're doing, we need to make sure that we're enforcing and holding accountable. Any questions?
Okay, if there aren't any, any questions, we'll go to administrative reports. First, we have the summer school reports for 2025, and they are, they're listed for you to look at. If you haven't, I'm sure everybody's looked at them already. And we'll have Board Goal 1 update, dual credit PTEC, and then the superintendent facility update. So, Dr. Hawkins, it's you again, I guess.
Summer school reports, Amanda?
She said homeschool.
Summer school.
I would never say homeschool.
Sorry. Yes, I will chat briefly about, we had a great summer school this summer. Quite a few attended attendance. Each one of our summer school principals that we hired for elementary, junior high, and high school all gave a report that I attached and uploaded for each of them, so you could see. Our numbers and number of courses recovered and how that went. So, that, that is there, and happy to answer any questions that you might have about summer school.
Amanda, did they do camps again, or was it just summer?
It was just regular summer school, no camps, yes. But we did have lots of students in attendance, and so, great turnouts, and good reports. Yes, and good reports. And they, they were really excited about the, the gains that they saw with the kids. And I'm going to also talk to you about our EOC scores, because we retested for our EOCs as well. And so, I'll, I'll go over that here in just a second.
Okay, so, on the next item there, the board goals, you've got a copy of those board goals. They're the ones that we created in a workshop, and you approved a subsequent shop, workshop. And so, Amanda will talk to you about EOC scores, AP scores, et cetera. I think it's important, though, that we remember this. When you look at those AP scores, don't, don't become downtrodden. Because our, our greatest shining star in this area is dual credit. And, and in economically disadvantaged districts, the dual credit is, in my opinion, exponentially more successful than AP is for kids from socioeconomic backgrounds like that. And it's the ability to get something in your hand. And, and so, it, it is not a normal pool of scores, because so many of our kids are over in the dual credit pool that are not in the AP pool. And so, just take that as part of the limitations of that data.
Thank you. I, I want to echo what Dr. Hawkins will say, that there's a difference between guaranteed credit and potential credit. And AP is potential credit. And so, we do require all of our students who take the AP course to take the AP exam. And our goal is for them to earn a three or higher. So, the numbers that you're looking at before you, we call passing a three or higher, and it's on a scale of one to five. And so, if a student earns a three, at most institutions, or higher, a three or higher, they will convert that to college credit. And so, you can see, we offer all the courses here in yellow, drawing, 2D art, English language composition, English literature composition, US history, computer science principles, computer science A, stats, calculus AB, physics I and German language and culture. And then, I also gave you the district's passing standard. Notice the number of students enrolled that took that course. So, for example, in drawing I, that course is stacked. So, that teacher doesn't have just one kid by herself. She does have a, a course that is taken with that student in the course as well. And so, that particular child sat for the AP exam but did not pass. So, you can see, that was one student. Then, same thing with 2D art design, we had three students. Two of the three, you can tell, did pass that course. So, sometimes you have to look at our enrollments to better understand those numbers, because if the enrollments are low, that does sometimes impact things. So, areas where we're keeping pace with this, with the nation is our English literature and composition. We had seven kids take it, we had 71% pass. So, some areas of, of good, some areas where we need to improve. And so, on the next page, I did give you on the back of that, I gave you guys a plan of action. So, we were noticing as we went through our AP scores that we have some students that might not be well-suited to AP, taking the AP courses. So, we put a procedure in place to use something called the AP potential report, which is our SAT scores drive that, and they'll take the PSAT and the SAT. And it shows which kids, based on their scores on those standardized, standardized tests, are most suited to the AP coursework. And so, we're going to work on that. We also sent four of our teachers to the APSI, or AP Summer Institute, to really make sure that they're fully aware of the course content, the rigor of the course, and the materials that AP does provide. And then, finally, at the bottom, you'll see, we did hire a new testing coordinator this year. Our previous one turned over. And we've been working very closely with her to make sure that she is getting into those AP classrooms to ensure the rigor of the standards and the materials, because we now have an administrator in that role, so that's great. So, that's our AP scores. And the final thing is what I was referencing earlier, was summer school. We have our June end-of-course exam results. Now, keep in mind, all of these students are retesters, so they did not pass in May. And so, they were retesting at the end of summer school. And you can see our district passing rate next to the regional passing rate and the state passing rate. And then, you can also see how many students sat for those tests in the district enrollments. And so, we had 34% of our students that retested pass English I. And that is above the region and the state passing rate. For English II, we have a higher, we have a higher number, 48, that are retesting there. And 19% of those passed, which is a little below the region and the state. Algebra I, we had 45 students sit for that. So, those are, might be eighth graders, ninth graders, 10th graders, retesting. We had 47% pass, which was above the region and the state. And in US history, we had 10 students, so 50% of those passed, five. And that was a little below region and state averages. And then, biology with 11 students. And we had 73% of those students pass the biology, which was above the region and the state. So, I do feel good about what our kids got at summer school this year for high school, for those face-to-face intervention classes. And if they did not pass, they will be given another opportunity in December to retake it. And so, we'll do more intervention and continue to work with those students.
So, were those regional passing percentages and state passing percentages, were those for June?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's, it's?
Yeah, it's apples to apples.
So, and also, so these students were only star retakes? They didn't like necessarily fail the course?
Correct.
This is just specifically stars, straight star?
Right. Some of them may have actually passed the course, didn't pass the EOC. This was, they, they had face-to-face intervention during summer school, and then were able to retake the EOC.
What kind of intervention are we going to have for these who did not pass?
We are working on that right now. We just split those students out, and we're working on intervention. They have a Wednesday advisory period, where those students will go to the teachers and get that. We're also spiraling in some warm-ups for them, and then we're going to offer some after-school tutoring. So, we have a good plan, I think, for high school intervention this year. We're still, we're still working on it, but I'm, I'm excited to see what we can do there, so, yeah.
AP really needs some work.
AP does need work. And there, I think the right?
It's been asked for a long time.
Yeah. It's still the age-old question. When I taught at the high school, it was always the English teachers versus the PTO. I says, hey, those in the hand, if you send somebody to CTC and they get an associate degree, or they get all these credits ahead of time, versus taking a chance to get a three on an AP exam. And a lot of universities, yeah, three is passing, but a lot of them would not accept that, especially if they wanted to go, go to the, the big university in Houston. They acquire a four or a five, you know, just to get the credit. So, a lot of students that passed AP went to college, and they had to retake that class. They weren't getting credit for that.
So, like what schools, like A&amp;M in Texas are only taking fours?
Well, not, not all of them. Three is passing, and a lot of, a lot of universities will take the three. But you're talking, you're talking A&amp;M, A&amp;M, some of the higher-level ones, they, they will take.
UT won't either.
That's why, that's why a kid, a kid going to CTC, getting an associate degree, you know, basically ends up with two years' worth of college, and saves their parents a lot of money. And that, that ties into college readiness, too, because they passed college classes. And, but they've got it in hand, as opposed to taking the roll of the dice. And those AP exams are not, are not easy by any means. But it was, it was some of our, our top teachers, when I was teaching, that said, oh, no, no, do a credit, forget it. They were all into AP and kept pushing AP. And as we just heard, what Amanda's put in place, not every kid that takes an AP class should take that AP exam, because their chances of passing are slim in like, based on whether they were just in that class to get the AP credit or whatever.
And I'll also add to that, Mr. Gallen, you make a great point. The nation, the nation doesn't require every student that sits for the course to take the exam. So, we do require 100% of our students who take the course to take the exam. And that can affect your passing percentages when compared to the national average, so.
Just a personal note, my granddaughter's going to school. She just graduated from another school in the area. And she's going to England to get her college degree. And the school she applied to, which is Bristol University, required them to take four, pass, or not pass, make a five on four AP classes. And so, she did. She said, everybody said, oh, it was easy for you. And she said, oh, no, I worked hard. I worked hard to get those five. So, so, you know, it's, it's, if you have, sometimes if you have a goal like that, and her school, unfortunately, like she said, didn't offer dual credit. She said it, she would have loved it if they, they had, but they didn't offer dual credit. So, AP was the top thing for her to take. But I just found it interesting, because I know how difficult those tests are from having kids in those classes, and, and feeling good that they made a three, you know, when they, when they got finished with them.
Very proud, very proud of that three.
Yeah. Right.
So, the 320, right, that attended summer school? It looks like 288 passed, right?
Which one are you looking at, high school?
Well, I'm looking at the overall elementary school.
Elementary.
Right? So, those 280 youngins, they're ready to go.
Yes.
That's awesome. Obviously, the other 10% are going to be, you know, intervention and that type of stuff.
Yes, they'll have intervention, they'll have a committee that should meet on each one of them and put a plan for instruction in for those, those students. And then, I'm sure you're aware, but House Bill 1416 also requires some, some of those students to either have 30 hours of additional intervention, or they can be placed with a TIA designated teacher, so master-level exemplary teacher, so that's great.
So, none of them are being retained, they're just being given services for the next?
There may be retentions. I'm not saying there are no, no retentions. There may be retentions. But the committee that meets on those students will decide to either promote with a plan or retain, and what, it'll be what's that individual's best interest.
And of course, parents can ask.
Of course, but parents have to participate in those committees.
But, I mean, it's, I mean, instead of 320, 288, you hit a hook, right? I mean, 90% effectiveness there. Not saying the other 42 is not effective, it's just that we've identified them.
For their gap was too large to close in three weeks of summer school. You know, that's, that's also part of it.
That's great.
One thing that I would add about the, the kiddos with end-of-course exams in English, we did, how many of those did we rescore or?
Yes, we turned in 80, we submitted 80 rescores. Thank you for that, I forgot about that. So, 70 of the 80 students who did not meet in English I or English II, 70 of them were in the high did-not-meets range, which means they were very close to passing. And the state offered us the opportunity to submit their essays and their writing for a human rescore, because, you know, they are scored using AI. And so, Dr. Hawkins was very supportive, and we submitted all 80, to include the 70 that were high, and the ones who might just, that might make the difference for growth for that student, they could show growth. And so, we submitted all 80 of those, and we'll find out soon about those rescores. So, thank you for reminding me about that.
Oh, I bet a lot of those will make.
That'll give them, that'll give them another, you know, chance with a human grader as well.
I'd love to hear the results on that.
Across the state, the results have been a low of 25% and a high of 80.
Wow.
So, somewhere in that range, that's students who failed the test by, scored by AI. And then, the human aspect comes in, and 25% to 80% of the schools of, of the kids scored in schools are now passing.
Now passing.
I just read that, yeah, that was somewhere like.
And we, I probably don't know the number on this, but we've got pretty, I mean, along with other districts, we have a large, spankful, emergent bilingual.
We definitely do.
Right, so it'd be, I know it's not in there, of how many English II were part of this, but bottom line is.
And we do a separate, we, you know, we do this, that separate summer school that really runs for us as well, for our urgent bilinguals and K and I, kindergarten and first grade, to give them that extra boost, because when you're, when you're new and you're little, that's the best time to really be immersed in the language. And so, we ran that in conjunction with summer school.
So, we look forward to telling you what those scores are, differences for culturally, you know? It'll be interesting to see.
Especially since 70 of the 80 are so close. So, that's hard to believe that it might not make a big difference.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've got the superintendent facility update, right?
Robert?
Mr. Turner is going to present a goal one. It's the PTEC.
The PTEC.
The PTEC CTE.
Yes.
All right, so, we were given the goal to build upon our current success in, in our CTE department, and that was by adding internships, dual credit, and then PTEC, which is pathways to technology, adding those opportunities to, to our school district. So, I wanted to kind of give you an update on where we've been in the 24, 25 school year, where we're going in the 25, 26 school year. So, last, last school year, in our, our CTE department, we had one teacher that was credentialed to teach dual credit. So, through, through an effort of new partnerships with Tarleton State University, Lamar State College Orange, we have worked to get more teachers credentialed to teach dual credit within our CTE department. So, going into this new school year, over the summer, we were able to get 15 of our CTE teachers credentialed. So, that, that's huge for us, because it's going to open up a ton of opportunities for our students. Last school year, we had two dual credit courses that were offered through CT, through CTE. And those, those courses were an animal science class through Tarleton State University, and then a robotics class through CTC. This upcoming school year, we have 21 on-campus dual credit offerings. We've expanded opportunities in ag, welding, graphic design, entrepreneurship, real estate, education, medical assistance, cosmetology, criminal justice, cybersecurity. medical assistance, uh, cosmetology, criminal justice, cybersecurity. Um, and then, we've expanded those opportunities in robotics as well. So, all of those that I just mentioned, other than the, the robotics and the ag, are all brand-new to CTE. Um, we had the one animal science class, which we will continue to have. But we've also broadened that into multiple dual-credit classes within that ag, animal science pathway and then other pathways in, with, uh, Tarleton State University. When we're looking at our internships and practicums, we've, we've, we've been pretty successful with our on-campus internships and getting students into these practicum classes. Uh, last school year, we had two hundred and sixty-eight student interns. That included a hundred and thirty-one students in health science and then thirty-one students in our ag program. Uh, going into this new school year and, uh, gonna lead with, we're still working on student schedules. We still have students registered. We, we, we still have holes to, to fill with our students. But the way we currently sit, we have three hundred and ninety-one students with practicums or internships currently scheduled. Uh, we've expanded our pathways. Um, these are our internships that we have not had in the past. But we now have internships in welding, real estate, sports marketing, advertising, computer technician, cybersecurity, and drones. Many of these are programs that we implemented and we started three years ago. It typically takes three to four years to get a student through the progression of those courses in order to get to an internship. And we're fi- finally there, so we're finally getting to see those students get into those practicums and, and find those internships for those students in those, those areas.
Where, where are some of the internships in, say, cybersecurity or drones?
So, currently, uh, we're working with, uh, working with Kip, um, in his department. A lot of that is going to be on campus to begin with, while we're working on expanding those opportunities with our community. So, we're working on getting some community buy-in, um, and, and getting those kids certified so we can start pushing them out, uh, to our other stakeholders and, and getting them internship off-campus and actual, and actual job sites.
Kip, you want to give an example of what you've done in the past?
Yeah, so, uh, we, we've built good relationships with, uh, banks, ISP, internet service providers, uh, hospitals. Getting these kids, not only are they getting Dell certified by Dell, so that's a grant that Dell gave us. Uh, then they're allowed to get that work experience where we would rotate these, you know, a handful of kids that we, you know, select to, to do this. And they go one, uh, every day for one month, one location. And then, the next month, they will rotate to another location. And then, at the end of that, then they get to pick where they want to work for the last month. Then, uh, at the end of it, they have the chance to get the job at that location that they, they picked. But at the end of the day, now all of a sudden, they have school experience, they have ISP experience, they have medical experience, they have financial experience in technology and all those fields. Now, their application just goes to the top of the list wherever they want to go to work.
Good.
So, yeah, it is a great program.
And with the dual-credit, um, opportunities that we're providing our students through Lamar, um, they're not just standalone dual-credit courses, um, like we have with CTC and, uh, with Tarleton. Instead, students are actually earning a college-level certificate for completing eighteen college credit hours in that specific, uh, pathway. Um, we're, we're working through this, this year one, um, working towards our accreditation. And then, once we are approved, um, with those twenty-one classes that I had, had mentioned, once we pass accreditation with Lamar, then they're going to open up each of those pathways where they can take the full course load of eighteen credit hours for each one of those. So, that will expand significantly in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. On page two of that handout, we've not only expanded our dual-credit opportunities in CTE, but across the entire high school campus. And that's done through our partnership with, um, Tarles, Tarleton State University. There were a couple of classes that we rolled out last year. Uh, we used Tarleton to replace Honorabs. Um, it's more of a dual, dual enrollment, uh, program. Uh, our students were very successful with that. Our teachers were very successful with that. So, we went ahead and expanded that, that opportunity as well. So, you can see the, the CTE courses as well as the, uh, core content courses that we're offering there as well. That's big for us because most of these are standalone courses. If I've got a student that's taking animal science and ag, but also taking composition one or taking US history through Tarleton and they start pairing those up, once we get those nine dual-credit hours, uh, they'll, they'll meet CCMR that way. So, it just gives us another route, uh, to CCMR and helps us get our students that college-level credit. So, just in summary, looking at, at our, our dual-credit, um, we'll, we'll see growth from one to fifteen credentialed, uh, dual-credit CTE teachers next school year. And we'll go from two to twenty-one on-campus dual-credit program offerings. Um, and then, looking at our practicums, uh, we'll grow from two hundred and sixty-eight students in twenty-four, twenty-five to three hundred and ninety-one students in twenty-five, twenty-six, which is a forty-five, twenty-nine percent rate. But that's what those charts at the bottom show. The, uh, next page is looking at, um, the opportunity of adding PTEC at Cockersville High School and, and within the district. Um, we're in the early stages of planning for this. Uh, this is an action plan that is laid out with, uh, timelines, uh, key phases. So, we're, we're, we're turning this into, uh, three, three phases, um, with the action steps for us to, to get that established. We've got to establish a team, we've got to apply, uh, complete the application to TEA, uh, for this program. And what PTEC will do is it'll actually, kind of what we're doing with Lamar, where we've established these college-level certificates, will also work to get our students that aren't necessarily college-bound, but are students that want to join the workforce and get them the, get them the coursework that they need to earn that associate's degree on campus with an emphasis on a technical field. Um, and the, the areas that we've targeted is welding, nursing, criminal justice, and then informational technology. Those are all high-need areas or high-needs, uh, our area where we can get the students what they need, get them that associate's degree, get them that, uh, certificate, and then get them, uh, ready for employment without finding the employment and then having to go through school. Instead, we could do all of that, uh, in-house and get the students what they need here. Any questions for me?
Yeah, this is. Robert, do you have a relationship with, uh, not heterosex, but Advent Health?
Uh, we, we do. We have, uh, student interns that, they go up there for patient care.
Yeah, because every time I get my blood drawn in the emergency room, I've got some, some young lady from Shoemaker that's in their program drawing blood and, uh, haven't seen any of our kids, we've got a lot of kids that get phlebotomy. And that's a great place to do it, too. And it's close.
So, they're there for phlebotomy, NA, or?
Yeah, different, different things. I, I've only experienced the, the kids in the phlebotomy lab when I go into the emergency room, because you got to go there to get your blood drawn. But, uh, everyone I've had, young, young individual I've had has been from Shoemaker High School, basically.
It, it may be to do with your level of insurance. You know, the code kids, they kind of reserve for a higher level of insurance.
I see what you mean.
I'd be starting, do I have the school insurance as a board member?
I'm just pulling the.
Right, you know, being in the military, when, when we got blood drawn all the time, you found the guy that was the oldest, crustiest sergeant in there to draw your blood because they use it as a training session for all the newbies.
The, the health science field is, is very competitive, um, getting students into those internships. But again, those, those are partnerships that we're working on. Uh, we've been working with Darden Elson students out there as well. Um, it, it's, it's become a matter of, you've got to get in front of people and meet with them to build those relationships. Shooting emails off to get people to, to sign up for student internships and, and practicums just isn't, isn't the best method. So, I'm working hard to get in front of people, talk to them, build those relationships so that they'll, they'll see the great things that our kids are doing.
I, I would say this, you know, the PTEC program is so valuable from the standpoint of, and you talk about internships, and it is, it is this whole CTE notion on steroids. Because you, you take, and, and, and we're talking about healthcare, but just take the criminal justice field. There, there's probably no bigger shortage in our society today than deputy sheriffs. Every county of everywhere, other than maybe Harris County, has a, because they pay exponentially so much money. Uh, they have a, a need there for deputy sheriffs. They can't, they can't fill enough staff members. And so, this program takes them through, you know, it, 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 it brings them through. They can get their, their associate's degree at the same time that they're getting their certifications. And these kids are getting certified to be a, a jailer, a telecommunications officer. They're doing an internship, they're doing job shadowing, ride-alongs. Uh, and you have a, a council that meets regularly. Uh, folks like Advent Health would be pulled in there. But definitely, if you're trying to track one of your partners, might be the sheriff of Corio County. And, and so, those people serve the purpose of talking about soft skills. What is it that our kids need in this program so that they're job-ready when they get their diploma? And so, these kids go through and they get all of these, these credits and everything. They've had their internships. And then, the sheriff's department hires them to be a dispatcher and, or a jailer. And while they're working from eighteen to twenty-one, they start through, a lot of these counties have instituted a program to where they pay for the police academy. And then, when they turn twenty-one, they become a full-blown deputy sheriff for them. So, it's really pipelining those jobs. And you see how they do it in criminal justice. But it's the same thing in healthcare. It's the same, those degrees are stackable. So, they may start off as a, as, as a, uh, a phlebotomist. And they may go on to become a LVN to a nurse, to, uh, uh, you know, some type of doctor or something like that. They stack those things. And so, it's stackable credentials. And it's all driven by relationships and opportunities within, because we want to build our community. And so, we have to have industry support. And, and the industry can be the sheriff of the county, supporting that whole growth. Second thing is, is this, is that if, if we do nothing other than stay consistent with what, everything else we've done, everything else, we do the same. The CTE step is tremendous. Sixty percent of our kids want skills, crafts, and trades. And y'all see how much improvement we've made right there? That is phenomenal. That is A-plus. And that is so exciting because I know what an impact it's going to make in the lives of our kids. They're going to get skills that they can become employable and get out and get their hands dirty, roll their sleeves up, and make good, hard-earned pay and enjoy the jobs that they have to support their family and become good taxpayers. And so, I look so forward to seeing that thing continue to grow. But huge step, huge step.
I was, that's, that's what I was going to say. I think, Robert, you found your niche, right?
I do.
I, I mean, this is unbelievable that, you know, you haven't even been in the job but, for a few months. And this is a great report about what's going to be happening this year. And I know you'll have, you have, your, your vision's wide open because I've text you, uh, emailed you about a couple of things. And, uh, of course, I would like to see some building things in here, too. You know, like plumbing and electricity, you know, electricians, things like that. But, you know.
Absolutely right, absolutely. And I think that's something that we got to get our local partnerships.
And I think, and I think they would.
Yeah, I would hope so.
They need workers.
I would hope so.
Robert hit the nail on, go ahead.
No, I think that's where we need y'all's help, too, is you all are obviously, you know, you're elected. So, people thought highly of you to put you in these positions. And you have community connections that maybe we do not all have. And so, pushing your community, you know, relations and as you are out and about in the community, pushing those people to us and letting them know about what we can do to support our community with our students in these internships and practicums is, it would be a great help for us. That you'll, you know, push them to Robert so that he can meet with them and get our kids out.
Say no more, yeah.
Well, he hit the nail on the head. You've got to get in front of them. You can't just send an email, because most of them don't read emails because they're busy anyway. And the thing about plumbing, I'm glad Jeff brought that up. The average age of a plumber is about fifty-something. And they are declining, they're retiring. And who's taking over? That, that's good money if you're a plumber.
And just being in the building business, they're, they're dying for plumbers, air conditioning people, electricians. They, like you said, they're, they're getting older, they're, they're retiring. And then, there aren't people in place to take their place. And so, it's, it's getting very difficult. I know that my sons tell me all the time, gosh, we, you know, gone, we need, we need an air conditioning guy, you know? Um, it's, it's difficult to find really good, good people out there.
Yeah, that's something, you know, we need to do is, is a team of, especially the seven of us, a team of eight, to get out there. We all know folks that do this stuff, right? I mean, we, we all know folks that do it, some more than others. And I was talking to a, a former builder, he's retired now, and, uh, family's taken over the business. And he's excited to see our CTE, how much this matures. And man, we, we got a red new building. They're framing down there, they're running, and they're running all sorts of stuff. I said, Jeff, I didn't know. He said, well, we'll, we'll get you hooked up, right? Um, you know, same thing with the welding. Hey, Mr. Turner, I got, I got to tell you, it's exciting, right? But it really comes no surprise of how aggressive your vision is on this and getting active things. Um, I was, on a final note, I was there a day, you know, doing some work down in Martin Walker and saw some folks in the back setting up all the cosmetology. I look forward to getting whatever hair I done.
We do, too. We're, we're excited for, for you.
Jeff, you going to get your nails done?
No, no, just a haircut.
You've got a great head of hair, so.
Just a haircut, a simple.
At the polished salon.
Polished, yeah.
Um, one of the questions I have, um, I had a, a grandson that was in a PTEC program. The counselors at the school weren't very well-versed on what they needed. Are we keeping our counselors up to date?
So, one of the things that we're doing, uh, we're working on getting them trained and getting them the information. CTE is ever, just, it's evolved. Every time I go to a conference or a training or a Zoom with someone from TEA, something has changed every single time. Um, so, so we work to push that, that information to them. Uh, we also work closely with the academic advisors and the lead counselor there to ensure that they're getting that information. So, we've kind of restructured a little bit to make sure that the appropriate people are getting the appropriate information. And then, we're getting kids scheduled the way they need to be scheduled.
Well, that's, that's one thing that really worried me because I, I, he came out of that PTEC program having to, he actually came down here to graduate. And the biggest majority of these credits would not transfer because of their counselors. Not because of their program, but their counselors.
It, it's very important that our students get scheduled into the right courses.
That's right.
Um, some of our success with, with getting the students into the internships are, are just some of the, the trainings and the adjustments that, that we've made with our counselors and academic advisors to make sure that our students are getting what they need. So, we're, we are working through that. And they're, they're getting on the right path now.
And we then have, we had a CTC summit, uh, last week, I think, at Region Twelve. A hundred percent of our high school counselors attended. And they've all been going to CTAT as well. We've been cycling them through that, um, CTE conference so that they can get that high level of training. Because Robert is exactly right, it is constantly changing. Like, we can barely keep up with the changes the state is making.
And Robert, if I can help you with that community connection with Advent Health. I served on their board and have for, for maybe twenty years. And there's a, um, there's a new CEO out there and I have set up some meetings with him, with community leaders. And however, I can help you with that.
Fantastic. That's great. We'll, we'll, we'll be in touch. That's, that's good. That's why I brought it up, Sherry.
Thank you.
I knew that.
Just, just a moment.
Thank you.
Kip can do the lawn stuff. Ask what she was.
She went hint, hint, that's not Bob Young, that type of thing.
All right, now we're ready for the facility update.
Yes, I, uh, put a grouping of papers that was real pretty. And so, turn to the, turn to the third page in that, pass the pretty ones first. Uh, I wanted to provide you something and give photo credit to the CCISD Technology Department. Uh, but.
Uh, but this wall here is a good example of why the substantial damage has to be addressed in Williams Ledger that it did. Um, you know, this, this wasn't a flood. A flood, uh, comes from the ground and goes up your wall. And you can, you can go in and you can cut drywall, uh, and you can push air in there. And then you can spray the chemical in there and, and kill stuff before it starts, okay? This come from the roof. And so it went down through the walls. And so you've got entire walls that are damaged, uh, just from the standpoint of, you know, about the third, um, storm that we had during that time, we were okay. The fourth one, not so much. Uh, the amount of water just become insurmountable at that time. They continued to remediate it and pull it off the floors and, and do the best that they could do. But on that fourth time, I think it was on a Sunday, then it was just like, hey, we fought the good fight. But at this point, we're gonna have to do something different. And so that last page you see there is kind of the, uh, that, that kinda shows you the, uh, substantial nature of repairs that has to be done in that building. And so, um, right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, the good news is at some point, we're gonna get a new inside of that building. Cause, you know, I keep talking about Chip and Joanna. Well, that's kinda demolition day, okay? If you've watched that, uh, watched that show. And so it's, uh, you know, it's substantial. And, uh, we will continue to work through it in order to get it back like it needs to be. But the main thing is it is done right. I mean, there's no, no, no use at this point in trying to rush through things. Uh, and, and we need to get it to where it needs to be. Um, there is on this board agenda, uh, an action item, uh, that is six, um, hold on, S. Of all the items that's on there, six S is just basically having you declare a state of emergency, uh, on that thing. So that, you know, as, as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, we had a emergency situation where we were trying to jump in and take care of kids and, and hope that we could educate them back in that building before school started. And it didn't happen. But nonetheless, that's just a belt and suspender to document that we're working in Chapter Forty-four of Texas Education Code. Uh, any questions on Williams Ledger?
Now, just maybe not a question, but, you know, kudos, cause if I'm not mistaken, I remember, Mr. Robbins, you were able to get almost three-quarters of a million dollars reimbursed.
Yeah, so far, that's where we're at. Uh, that was, uh, to get us ready for the start of school. Because the failure rate on the devices we were pulling off that campus, we were wasting our, our time trying to get those things ready. But yeah, right, right at three-quarters of a million dollars, new computers, new interactive boards, new cards.
I'm sure power supplies and all that stuff.
Yeah, so the new cards, yeah, are the new modern ones. So they actually have triple chargers, uh, built into them. The, the cards we currently have in, in our high school, uh, in elementary, they don't have that. So when they charge the battery, they don't stop charging. And that's one of our biggest failure rates in batteries.
How many, how many computers were all of that, three-quarters million?
Uh, it was a thousand computers and thirty-two cards.
In addition to the eighteen-hundred that you just got in.
Correct, yes, sir.
You guys have been too busy, have you?
Uh, we, we, we have been very, uh, very blessed to be where we're at right now because we need them.
That's awesome.
And, and it wasn't for a lack of trying, you know? Uh, they got in there and they moved, uh, technology around to try to protect it. Uh, they bagged projectors and water still got into the duct tape sealed bags. It's still water permeated and got in there. And so, uh, they, they did a heck of an effort to try to get it done, but it just didn't work out.
Well, the pipes ain't solid, right? So the pipes are hollow. You can wrap the tape around that pipe all day long, but the projectors.
Then there's this little thing in Texas called humidity.
Sure, have to bring that up.
Imagine that, huh?
Anything else about Williams Ledger? Okay, the next item there is.
Oh, work quick, what, what's, you have a timetable of projective where that will be done?
I, I've been asked that so many times. And if I put something out there, it would be a lie. Because it would just be closing my eyes, because you're dealing with insurance adjusters.
Right.
And they move at their own pace. And, uh, they've got the checkbook and they just kinda, you know, now we're encumbering expenses up, you know, to a million dollars. Uh, but, you know, just like the estimate on the roof, there's a three-million-dollar roof. And, um, and so it, we're, we're talking about, uh, millions of dollars in this project. And, uh, and so you're dealing with insurance adjusters and then contractors. And, you know, the contractors move at their own pace too. They don't wanna incur any overtime. Uh, so they, that's part of the reason that they move at their own pace. And so I would really, I mean, hey, I would love to be in there, it'd be a great Christmas present. But that's substantial damage. And, you know, I, I would, I would be remiss if I even give an estimate, just because it's gonna be wrong. So.
What, what's the priority? Is the roof the priority first before they start putting anything?
The roof is sealed in now.
Okay.
And so we've got that to where it's, there's no more water coming.
Okay.
And so now it's the inside.
Inside.
And then once the inside, then we'll have to go back and look and see if the roof needs to be addressed deeper.
I know.
With the entire thing coming out.
And I know prior to that, the units were being replaced at the same, prior to ACV happening. Are even all the units replaced now?
All of the units are not replaced on top of that building. That's part of the two-hundred that's over twenty years old out there. And there were only a set number that went out. So we replaced what went out.
So, Dr. Robbins, you said the roof will be addressed. You mean, it's sealed now, but it's not enough to.
It, it is, it is sealed, but it depends on whether the insurance adjuster says. They took samples and they sent them off for analysis to see if, if the roof completely needs to be addressed. Or if the temporary, they call it the temporary, uh, seal that was put on it, if that's acceptable.
Well, if that temporary seal's acceptable, I mean, what if later on, if that temporary part cracks again?
It's got a fifty-year warning.
Okay, oh, that, right down the nail? Okay, yeah.
Because that, the reason I ask the question, Mike, is before you start putting up all that wall again, we saw the picture where the water came down, you put up new wall and the roof's not fixed. Water comes right back in, and then you're right in the same situation that you were before.
Or worse.
So, or worse, yeah.
Or, yeah, worse.
So we've got, we've got the roof, uh, under control. And, and, uh, I know Honey's Roofing is also, uh, the, uh, project you approved at the high school. They have been, uh, engaged at the high school to get that roof repaired as well.
All right, any other questions?
So the last, uh, well, I mean, we can talk as much about facilities as you want to. But the, uh, the, the other item that will be on the agenda for tomorrow night is the designated amount of monies that was in fund balance, uh, for baseball, softball conversions. Uh, that, that was part of that initial deal, if you'll look back on that. But, um, we do have renderings now, uh, on page two-hundred and, I think, seven. In the, no, I'm sorry, two-hundred and five. Uh, in the, I was off two pages.
No, you don't have that.
Yeah, I can't believe that, shame on me. And the, uh, board packet is the quote there that we are recommending for the baseball, softball conversions. Um, Symmetry Sports is the preferred vendor or the vendor of Major League Baseball. And so they are a very quality program. Uh, I have had experience with numerous, uh, of these vendors over, uh, nineteen years ago, uh, when I started. Uh, and my experience with this company is they do provide very good customer service. Uh, they are known for their customer service. And so I have no problem with recommending them to you. Uh, in this bid is the, um, uh, backs of the netting in the baseball field. The netting there, uh, that is sponsored by Zip-Tie, uh, is, is in here.
Sponsored by.
Um, and, and on the softball field, uh, conversions, uh, the same thing. Uh, the softball outfield fence, if you notice there, that it talks about replacing somewhere with R-panel supply and install new R-panel fencing at outfield fence. Batter's eye will be twelve-foot tall by forty-foot long. Um, and so, uh, it's also, uh, bullpens and foul lines. There's new black vinyl coated fencing along there. Uh, I, I just say all that to say this, is that a year ago, uh, my former district went through and, and we went through a process and narrowed down to the cheapest bidder. And the cheapest bidder in that bid, uh, bid the carpet only, no fencing, no netting. And it was the exact number that you're getting, all the fencing that's in this quote and the netting and all of that. And so these people, uh, really want your business. Uh, and, uh, I think it will be a great way to honor, um, the standard that was set by the baseball, softball team uh, this past spring. Uh, it will put them on the ability to, uh, not lose twenty days of practice in baseball and, uh, and, and put softball on the field as level. Uh, and so you, you kids will get more out of it. And I know that, um, you know, it'll, it'll bring greater opportunities for the kids to cope too. Uh, and so I, I think that is a, not only a, a quality, uh, conversion, I think it is financially, uh, much more pleasing than what I thought. Um, and, uh, and I know that the kids and community will be proud of it. Any questions about that?
It's just flooding will be no longer an issue, or shouldn't be an issue unless we get a foot of rain.
Well, if, if that field floods, we're gonna have bigger problems than, than that field. Because they do have, you know, they do have drains. Uh, it, it will drain. It is a, it is a permeable surface, uh, that the drainage goes under the field. And it will go back and either tie into storm drains or, or, uh, or some type of, uh, alleyway back there where that water pushes off of the field. But it is, it is, uh, yeah, you can play on it. And just a little bit of, little bit of breathing after, after a rain, uh, uh, there, there will be a substantial amount of dirt that comes off of both of those fields. And we've got space that we feel like onsite that we can spread and utilize that dirt. And so that was a, a cost savings in this whole plan, uh, in this whole planning view. And, uh, and I think that we can utilize the, the soil on our campus, uh, to just build up some low spots as well. And, and then with that, I say, I say this, is that Jimmy and I have been working on this for, for months. And so if it, it, anything that you can just call up and say, hey, guy, you know, we need you over here. And they come and seven days later, they got something in front of you. So, you know, they have to come out, they have to measure, they have to talk with you. There's a process you go through. And so anything in a design, build, model, it, it takes time. So it's took a, a lot of time to get to where we are right now.
They'll be ready by trials for when season starts?
As long as y'all approve it and they get a PO prior to October the first, then it will be ready prior to January first. And they have, uh, you know, like I say, this, this isn't a fly-by-night company. This is a company that has a reputation for doing what they say. And I know that they, uh, pride themselves in hitting their marks.
Dr. Robbins, I noticed that the shock pad was not included in that. Are we gonna put that on there ourselves, or?
There's not a, there's, there is a, uh.
Underneath the.
Yeah, there, there's some folks that put shock pads under it. But there is, there is a concussion. Uh, let me think of what I'm trying to say. There is a, a concussion.
Protocol?
Well, no, a concussion test that it passes as is.
Without the shock pad?
Right, there is a shock pad that you can put on there. Uh, it's overkill and a lot of places don't even put it on the football fields.
Okay.
Uh, because there is, there is cushion within that thing. So that, that is extra. Uh, if you wanna put it in there, we can do a quote, but.
No, I, I just wondered if, 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 do they normally put that under there on the baseball field?
No, I mean, it, it's, to me, it's overkill.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and, and you'll see a lot of football coaches that swear by it. But I, I don't, I mean, uh, there's still enough of me that I played in a head grass patch, you know, and so.
I played on Avenue B.
So, but no, I, I think it's safe. I, I think that, uh, Coach LaValle and, and the softball team, uh, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll be kids injured on it.
The big thing though, the big level field.
Yes.
The only thing you can see on those girls out there sometimes is their head if they're out there by the fence. Let's see it, might tell me.
Reducing maintenance, reducing operation costs, right? Small investment, right?
Exactly.
No watering, no mowing, no weeding. Adding dirt, no fertilizer.
Exactly what Mr. Gore is saying. He is spot-on about the cost savings on this. And, you know, you got a labor cost, you got a fertilized cost, you got a, a utility cost of water. Um, and, and then you've got striping, you know, that you've gotta do. And then, you know, especially on the baseball field, you're, you're building up mounds, you're bringing in dirt because dirt erodes and it, it leaves.
Growing the grass.
And so it's, uh, it, it, it is, it is, it is a savings. And, and it's a savings on, on, uh, diamond sports, it's a savings on football fields. You know, ninety-two percent of the fields, football fields in the state of Texas, which also would include soccer, um, or turf. And so everybody has gone to this. Eleven years ago, I bought a baseball, softball complex that did not have turf. And we, we, we could not get enough space for people wanting to meet and play in that facility. And three years ago, not one playoff game. Because people had stopped playing on grass. They all wanted to play on turf. And so now that district has put turf there. And so I guarantee you this, this spring, there will be, because of the proximity to it, now that it's turf, there will be a lot of schools that come back and play, um, playoff games at that facility.
And you know, another big thing is the, the water. I, I, I probably perceive within the near future where they'll cut your water because we're getting so much, you know, from Georgetown growth and Austin and so forth, that they won't have enough water to, to water the fields.
That's true. That's absolutely right.
The price is gonna go up double.
Yeah, I think they'll probably cut the water off.
My only question, final question is, just to make sure that we're all tracking. So there's two different things, one on six-oh-five and one on six-oh-six. The field is listed on page six-oh-six, consideration to approve bid for baseball, softball field conversions. On six-oh-five, it says consideration to approve the design-build method. Imagine the design-build method is for this, right? Nothing else.
So, in, in, according to the Texas Education Code, you can't engage in construction of a facility or conversion on this scale unless you approve the construction method. So you've got construction manager at risk, you've got construction manager agent, you've got general contractor, you've got design build, and there's, there's one more. But each one of those is a different delivery method. And so before you take part in, uh, buying a project or, or starting a project, you have to take action to say, this is our method of construction. And so what you're doing is you're doing a design build. And different one, different methods work better with different projects. You would not want to build a new elementary school, design build, because there's no architect involved, okay? So Jimmy and I become the architect and the overseer of that project. Jimmy and I are teachers and coaches, okay? Jimmy and I are teachers and coaches, okay? We don't, I look, I've built a lot of stuff, but I'm not, I'm not an engineer, okay? And so, and not only an engineer, an engineer that does it all the time. And so in an instance like that, you would wanna go with like a construction manager at risk or construction manager agent. But in a situation, if you were building a tennis court, a tennis court is fundamentally simple, okay? And you've got post tension cables and I get all that, but there is an engineer that gives you a blueprint drawing and stamps that drawing. And so you work with that company and you cut out the middle person. If you did this project as a construction manager at risk or a construction manager agent, the estimates right now, I made some calls, and that's about a four point three million dollar project, okay? So just the method can change the bottom line price. So if you wanted Goodwin Lassiter and Gallagher and those folks to build it, then it's gonna substantially cost you more money. But if you do design build on projects like this, it meets up to exactly what your needs are, then you save twice the cost of the project.
Couple million.
You're saving a couple million dollars. That's the same stuff that my wife, I have to talk with her about sometimes because she, and kept telling me how much money they're saving me, I'm like, no, two point one million is what the cost is. Yeah, but I'm saving you two million. And so we get into those discussions, but that's a, that's a good example of four point three million and just the method of construction can change the whole cost of your project.
Right, anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and, I'm gonna list the consent agenda, it is pretty lengthy, but we'll go back and Dr. Hopkins will help us get through them. Our consent agenda is the discussion of previous board of trustees meeting minutes, including the workshop meeting July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the regular meeting July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Then we have discussion of the financial statements and payments and bills, discuss the budget amendment request for the twenty twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year fund one nine nine operating budget, discuss to approve purchases over fifty thousand dollars, first a purchase of band uniforms and band instruments, then renewal of Skyward software licenses for financial management, payroll, employee access, crystal reports, maintenance, and student management. This is sole source for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents, it comes from budgeted funds. The Iscor Integrated Systems Corporation, Skyward hosting for student, students and finance for sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars from budgeted funds. Then we have Tasby Risk Management Fund for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six unemployment compensation, workers' compensation, property, auto, cyber, property and school liability insurance coverage for one million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars from budgeted funds. Then discuss, well, we won't do that tonight. We'll discuss, approve resolution amending policies regarding board meetings and public comments and discuss to approve resolution adopting a policy to implement local library advisory council, E F B L, S L A C. And then discuss to approve resolution adopting policy prohibiting assistance with social transitioning and discuss to approve resolution adopting policy for parent grievances regarding statutory rights. Then discuss to approve resolution adopting policy to prohibit certain employee actions on controversial topics and discuss and discuss to approve resolution adopting policy to prohibit diversity, equity, and inclusion duties, also known as D E I. Discuss an agreement with Charlton State University for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Discuss the before and after school agreement with the Armed Services Y M C A. Discuss an interlocal government agreement to share facilities with the City of Copper's Cove for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school years. Discuss an interlocal government agreement with the City of Copper's Cove to provide school resource officers for C C I S D. That's a hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents from budgeted funds. Discuss contract with education elements for four hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, that's Lasso grant funds. Discuss the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student code of conduct. Discuss the list of approved T-test appraisers for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Discuss twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six superintendent constraints. Discuss a state of emergency resolution for C C I S D Williams Ledger Elementary School. Discuss the appointment of a delegate and alternate delegate for the twenty twenty-five Tasby Delegate Assembly. And then lastly, an out-of-state trip, the NAFIS Fall Conference to Washington, D.C., which is September fourteenth through the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. That is our consent agenda, Dr. Hopkins, you wanna get started?
Can you breathe?
Yeah.
The, y'all, first thing, let me say this, is that in nineteen years, I've never seen the amount of policy in law that's come out of Austin. And so it has been a very heavy lift as we've moved forward with this. And most of what we have here is only what is either, has to be in place by either September first or September eighteenth. And then there's still a update one twenty-six that is coming. And so we went through those whole processes of filling out all of the surveys for Tasby and they're working on that and it will come later. But I do wanna say that this is a heavy lift and there's so many people that is a part of this whole process that I would be remiss if I'm not talking about the cabinet that has went in and done things to get all of this on here. That Monica was here Saturday working with me. I worked Saturday and then there were a part of Sunday that I worked after church. And so, but it has taken all of that to get to where we are. And it's still not perfect, but we just gotta get it close to perfect by tomorrow night, okay? But you're dealing with, like I was talking about contractors. When you're dealing with attorneys, they're contractors too. When you're dealing with Tasby, you're dealing with all those people and they move at their own pace. And nobody's in a rush, but everybody expects you to be in a rush. And so it has been voluminous. And so I'm gonna walk through these things here. Some of them, you've had drafts of, and unless you have any questions, stop me, we'll go over those. But the first one that I would go to would be D one. D one is the band uniforms and band instruments that are on there. Amanda and I have been working with Mr. Morales since he come in to try to ensure that all of those needs are addressed and taken care of. That band program is somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty kids. You know, you have a slow roll with kids coming from the junior highs. You know, junior high kids in their minds for three years know one thing. When school starts, practice starts, right? Then they get to high school, guess what? My activities start during the summer. And so they kinda have to be reprogrammed, so I'm not sure where that's allowed at. But, you know, we wanna build to be a three hundred member band at some point, that's our goal. We want kids participating. And so those instruments are basically, that we're recommending for replacement are falling apart to the point that they're no longer good to repair. You know, there's, sometimes you get all the good out of it that you can possibly get out of it. And then, and then you've got to cycle things out. And so that's where those instruments are. The band uniforms, the last purchase of those, of band uniforms was in twenty ten. Twenty ten, am I right? Fifteen years ago, twenty ten. And so we're recommending these band uniforms here, Mr. Morales wants to make sure everybody's at peace with them. They are, they are quite stylish, they're fancy. And.
Have you seen a, do we have a picture of?
I've got a mock-up.
Yeah, it's on there.
Oh, I did put it in there?
Yeah, it is in there.
Okay.
It's on page about three oh six, three oh six, three oh seven.
It looks very stylish and fancy and I think it will cut out the need for some of the things that we've been purchasing from the kid's standpoint. What did y'all call them? The tops, you know, we've been by. Yeah.
The show tops.
Yeah, show tops.
Show shirts, whatever, yeah.
And so, you know, we'll have full-blown viability with this. And so, hey, it, the cycle moving forward needs to be every ten years that you address this item. And so it's come time, it's not like we're trying to do something.
That's what I was actually gonna ask, now along with.
So coaching, coaching, you know, athletics, coming from a coaching background, your uniform should be on a three-year cycle. But they're being pulled and tugged and spit on and everything else. So that's the, that's the normal cycle in Texas public schools. And I know, hey, some rich schools, parents throw enough money to the booster clubs, they buy uniforms every year. But that's not, that's not reality. And so, but every ten years is a good cycle for that. Any questions on that?
Instruments too?
There's some instruments in there, yeah.
Hey, those instruments sure have got on.
Oh, they are.
I hate to be a parent and have to buy those.
Well, it just really makes you think of this, you know, when you spend money and then you see inclement weather, do you really push your instruments out there in inclement weather, you know? I, I mean, it like sucks air out of me, but, hey, I get it, we do.
I know the program pushes parents buy the insurance, right? The band really recommends purchasing the instrument insurance, it's not that much.
Is it a solid number or based on different sizes of the instrument?
I believe it's a consistent number.
I'm pretty sure it's a trade.
Whether you have a flute or you have a sousaphone, you know, it's.
Question, the old band uniforms, what do they do with them, just trash them or will they go on auction or something like that?
There will be some that's trashed, there will be some that, you know, businesses might want. And so we can, we can dole those out, just like athletic uniforms to put up in their business. And so, and then there may be some that hit through the auction, we auction stuff off too. So just different, different ones.
Applebee's have stuff like that.
Yeah, we should, right? Encourage our businesses to get the uniforms and put on shirts, you know, all sorts of the fast food. Yeah, absolutely, right? Have them presented to those businesses.
Hey, we got two businesses in town that do, to my knowledge. And I haven't been in ever business, but the ones is Applebee's and Black May. I don't know of any others, but I've talked with the coaches and told the coaches that if businesses want them, then let's get the retired equipment out there and put us, because if you go to Colleen, you do see them up in Colleen.
You sure do.
You know, you go to Rudy's, you go to Freddie's, you see, you know, shoemaker stuff up in there. And so we need to be doing the same. All right, aside from that, the rest of those purchases are just, you know, everybody's got their hand out for something, you know, whether it's insurance, whether it's software. The next item that I will, unless anybody's got any questions about that.
How much percentage did insurance go up, did anybody figure that out?
I didn't look at that, Cliff, did you look at what the percentage of, did it go up?
Insurance.
A couple hundred thousand, wasn't it?
For Tasby Insurance, there were some areas that increased and some areas that remained the same.
Okay.
There weren't any decreases.
Really?
There's a ten-year sliding scale that certain instances that we play playing sport and basketball out of that ten-year window. And so that's kinda how they base their policy.
Okay, so I would go to six E next, and that's the approval of the resolution and policies regarding public board meetings and comments. And so I think the discussion on that, the big, the big area of that that changed it, all in, I believe, Senate Bill nineteen is what changed a lot of this, is that we're going to move from scraping all of the eyes off all the buses where it said independent school district because we're no longer independent. Because you, as a locally elected board, can no longer figure out when is the good time for you to meet.
So we're now CCD, huh?
Yeah.
CCD.
Yeah. The, but here's the deal, we are not supposed to meet unless emergency resolution during the business day. The attorneys have recommended that while business day was not defined in the law, that it would be a good practice in moving forward to define that business day to meet after five o'clock. So the impact that it has with y'all is that we'll have to bring the board operating procedures back to the table. I know we've got to amend it anyway because of personnel committees changing that, that line. But we're also gonna have to, construction of agenda timeline will have to change. The seventy-two hours is no longer valid, it's now three business days. And so if you meet on Monday, you need to have the agenda posted by Tuesday. And so that will affect some of your timelines, but it will certainly affect consideration for workshops. No workshops, and I even went and clarified with the attorneys, that means trainings too. And I think that's very unfortunate. If you can't do trainings during the day, there's no action taken on that. And so, you know, to say, no, you, you seven people that are locally elected can't train, doesn't matter if you take a vote or anything, if they're saying you cannot, you cannot train during the day. And that's foreign to me, I get it, they want parents to be more engaged and us to be more transparent. Well, we're video, everything is here, it's video, there's notes that are posted on the agenda. And we're not taking action on anything today. But if we were, if we had a trainer here and we were learning about some aspect of our school district, that's no longer allowed, and to me, that's unfortunate.
When does it start, September first?
September first.
So we could still, I could have a budget meeting next, next Tuesday, we could still meet at noon.
That, that meeting isn't gonna be a budget meeting, that one's gonna be an ethics training.
Okay.
And so Rick Lambert will be here as attorney to do an ethics training. But yeah, that'll be the last one, unless we call him.
Twenty eighth, we have a.
The text one.
A budget meeting.
Right, that budget.
That's at six o'clock.
Right.
That's gotta be for the public, yeah.
But why would that depend on?
Twenty eighth or twenty.
Because we don't have public comments at training.
Twenty eighth, twenty ninth, Friday.
We will.
Yes.
From now on.
Football game Friday night.
Like anybody.
So they do allow you in public comment, one of the things that is recommended now is this, is that your board meeting, a good practice is that the public comment is public comment. So as long as it's not anything that breaks the law, you offer that. Good practice is that if you do a special call meeting, that your meetings are this special purpose and that the comment at that meeting be limited to any item on the agenda.
Yeah, I understand.
And then if you, if you wanna come back and speak on, you know, that you want sunflowers grown at the administration building and the horse troughs, then you come back and speak on that at the regular meeting.
That'd be nice.
And so that's, that's, well, that's, that's about as big a compromise as I think is out there. But really and truly, as, as, as seven individuals, we've gotta spend some time thinking. Uh, but really and truly, as, as, as seven individuals, we've gotta spend some time thinking on how we're going to structure things differently. And ideas are this, uh, I would not recommend to you meeting two nights back to back. I, I think that becomes counterproductive, but hey, I work, you, you, I'm your employee, I'll be here if you call.
I don't think that's.
It's not just us, it's all the staff.
Yes.
And everybody that's, that supports this public meeting, right, I mean, there's a whole bunch of, I mean, there's seven, right?
So back there.
Well, across the district.
Been doing it all in one meeting.
Is counterproductive because it becomes a midnight meeting.
Three o'clock in the morning.
Exactly.
I think there's gonna be two schools of thought here, I, I think that they're going, they're, they're, districts are gonna gravitate to one of two ways. They're either gonna gravitate to a, two meetings a month, to where two weeks ahead of time, you do a workshop. And then you come back and you do the regular meeting. Or you're going to keep your same timelines except for the three days and then you're going to do non-quorum meetings. That's meetings to where there's three or less of you in some type of subcommittee format that addresses things the week before. And then you have a meeting and I think, I think when all the dust settles across the state, just my thoughts, not, not anything I can prove, but I think one of those two. Well, the third option will probably be that there will be some boards that says, we're gonna have one meeting. And be done with it. And so, I, I think those will probably be the three directions that boards move, but.
The problem I have with the non-quorum meeting is that we don't hear everybody's thoughts.
No doubt.
That's correct. And it's, it's not really transparent, right?
It's not transparent at all.
No.
The only way to do the non-quorum meetings and, and make them where there's communication is, is to, is to, like, if you have a, a finance committee meeting and then they send out notes to everyone.
That's different, yeah.
But other than that, no, you don't, you don't get to, the, as board president, you don't necessarily get to hear Jeff or John or Heather's opinion on that because you weren't in that meeting.
City council does that actually, um, I don't know how many of y'all know, but I was married to a city councilman and, and uh, they had, they had two at a time the week before. You know that too, John, since you were city councilman.
It, it is common.
It's, it's common for cities for sure, but I just hate that you really don't hear the whole board's feelings on something because sometimes that sways us when we hear other people's opinions.
It is important.
I think it's important too.
That's true. That, that model of uh two meetings a month, uh, one with a workshop and then two weeks later, the actual meeting, might be a, might be a pretty decent model for us.
But a lot can happen in two weeks.
Technically, technically, we're having two, two meetings a month anyway, but they're together.
Could you even do it a week apart?
I'm, I'm thinking. Or a week apart?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, two, two weeks, yeah, two weeks is, is a long time.
So post it on a Tuesday, be ready for the Monday.
Well, yes, it'd be ten days.
Yeah.
It'd be ten days, yep. Because of the posting, right?
Take three days out of it.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be ten days.
Three business days.
Well, that, that.
That's seventy-two hours.
So think about that, let me know what you think, let Dr. Hawkins know what you think.
I think the one we got there thing is, is best.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got to adopt the policy and so, uh, these policies have been through Tazby, I'm sorry, T, any, any of them that had to go through rulemaking has been to TEA. Uh, and then have went on to Tazby with their attorneys and their policymakers and then all of these attorney, all of these policies, your attorney has uh also reviewed as well. Um, the second one there is uh the school library advisory council and uh, the law is this, you don't have to do this, okay? This is one that you don't have to do, you, you could vote to not do it, but my thought was this, if fifty parents get together, they can invoke you having to do it. Because they can petition, if fifty parents petition you, then you have to do it. So my deal is just go ahead and do it and then tha- that way, because here's the deal, if you don't do it, you have to pay for Tazby policy to create the policy. Make the policy, upload the policy and you uploads, so you're paying for it. And then parents comes in and says, no, we want a policy, I mean, a, a school library advisory council. And they go through the nuances of that and then guess what you gotta do? You gotta come back and you gotta change the policy and then Tazby, so you're, you're, you're gonna have to pay for it. So to not incur that expense, I would recommend that you just go ahead and do it and it's just like the uh, uh, the uh, health advisory council.
Exactly.
Uh, you've got a health advisory council that floats around out there that makes recommendations and it is uh recommendations to you. And, and let me say this, we haven't had any issues with library books in this district, okay? And uh, I know that's a, a slippery slope because uh, you know, different people get offended by different things, but.
Based off the material.
That's been happening since Shakespeare. And it's not ever gonna go away, society has gotten more overt in some of the areas that they write about, I would buy that. But, yeah, there's been literature conflict um forever and, you know, from my standpoint, um, you know, we don't, we, we educate all kids. And, you know, we also have, just like in the student code of conduct that you have, just because you have um, a standard of conduct in your home. That doesn't mean that it's allowed in the school, you know, if your kid jumps up on top of a cafeteria table and eat, or your dining table and eats every night sitting on top of the dining table. That may be perfectly suitable for you and your house and, and the rules that you have in your house. But when they come to school, we have to have a standard of conduct for everybody and you can't sit on the cafeteria table. And so, we do have to compromise and what we have, uh, a- as we all come together, that's a blessing of public school. And it doesn't matter if it's a behavior or library books and what I may think is acceptable for my kid, Ms. Manning may think is not acceptable for, for her kid, kid.
I wouldn't let mine get on the table like you did.
Well.
I saw them.
Keeps rats from running under your feet. But I, I think that, I, I think that uh, go ahead and setting this up and having processes in place is the best path forward.
Doctor, did I miss it, I did not see the uh, who comprises the committee, it talks about different people, it doesn't say a, a number or, you know, what community members and so forth?
At, at this time, there's been no rulemaking from TEA. I expect, I expect on this that they will shoot things down like they did with the safety committee. You know, we started out with the safety committee and then they said, and the board president has to sign off on it, you know, and so, they, they started saying, well, this person has to be there. And this person has to be there and so, I think you'll see that, but that'll all come from TEA at some point.
Mike, didn't it say something about role appointed chair?
Yeah, it said, at the, at the first meeting, the chair will be appointed by the committee, but it doesn't really say who the committee was.
What would it consist of?
There'll, there'll be some requirements and I think, look, put a policy in place and then uh, don't, don't start on Wednesday trying to, to do it.
Figure it out.
Let, let's, let's, let's meet the standard and then let's see what comes from TEA because right now, this policy is mute on the scale of everything. Uh, cell phones is number one policy that anybody wants to talk about. And so, I think once some of those things start to peel off, uh, then TEA will start to push stuff down and then you'll get a real regulation that we will create from what TEA gives us. Uh, that at some point will blend into policy.
So we're just establishing a policy to establish the committee, okay? Cause I, I sit on the library advisory board for the city and uh, the city library has a policy about challenges to books.
And you've already got one of those. I mean, in, in, in the district.
And, we did, and it, it's interesting because when I, that initial thing that came out about libraries when they were in session, we were the approving, that we were gonna have to approve all the books and all those things. And this, this is a, a great compromise to create this committee, now, they are, they won't create the poli, they, will they create policies or?
Their advisory.
They're just advising, what's, what's gonna happen.
So they'll bring you a recommendation.
The policies, once we get the guidance.
They'll, they, at some point, that committee reviews stuff and then the way that I see it working is just like Shaq, they'll bring you a recommendation and Shaq brings you a recommendation on sex education. And so, this committee will bring you a re- a recommendation and say that, hey, look, you know, this guy Jimmy Shuck out here has contested um Huckleberry Finn. He, he doesn't like Ta- uh, he, he doesn't like Mark Twain and so, then they'll bring you a recommendation that you can, you know, move forward with, vote, not vote, or whatever. Anything else about Slack?
Slack and Shaq.
So, um, G.
Now, now, we'll just be approving that we're gonna do this tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, just creating the advisory.
And then G is the resolution adopting policy prohibiting the assistance with social transition. And, and y'all, my, my personal professional opinion on this is, is that, you know, school employees should be, that, that is a responsibility of a parent. And that's basically what this is saying, you know, uh, that the, the sexual aspect of what kids bring to us, those parents need to be parents and take care of that, that's not. You know, we're trying to, we're trying to educate kids and I, I get it, some of that uh comes with community values, but there is a, a line with some of that, that parents uh have to pick up. And so, school personnel shouldn't be socially transitioning kids, especially without parents, you know, being involved in the whole deal anyway.
Refresh my memory on, on this, I just thought, I didn't, had to look it up or anything, alright, we, we have a policy in place that, that does not permit boys and girls bathrooms?
I don't think you do. Did you create one?
I, I don't know, I, I was, I just thought about that when I was looking at this the other day.
Yeah.
That.
I, I don't, I don't think you created one because it, 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 in a former administration, or maybe even a couple former administrations, um, you know, Title IX. Was pushing you to allow uh different birthed, uh, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna be politically correct here because I'm gonna mess up, so I'm gonna just go ahead and on it. Sexes or genders, uh, to me, it's the same thing, but should not be uh allowed into uh the locker room or restroom of another unliked sex or gender. And so, um, that was kinda tight line that the Fed was pushing down. Um, in Texas, we, we never did that, we never were forced to do that. Um, and so, you know, uh, what I've done in the past is use the UIL, whatever your birth is. And, and, and we've said, look, if, if your child is transitioning and you want your child transitioning, we have a federal law and obligation to provide a free and appropriate, appropriate public education. And we will uh offer accommodation of an alternative restroom.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was thinking, I was wanting, because if a parent decides to transition their child, I, I don't wanna see a point where we have a boy going into a girl's restroom or locker room.
Yeah, we've kinda lost the ship when we do that.
Right, so if we need to put something in place to prevent that or if this takes care of that, then I'm good with it.
No, I, I just think that's the way we operate and that, and so, the, the, the regulations in which we operate with are the same thing with UIL. UIL said, what, what is the birth certificate, the birth sex of that child is what's they will participate in activity with. And so, uh, that's the way that I have operated schools in the past with restroom access, locker room access. And if you need an accommodation, then if you will talk to your child's counselor, then we will provide an alternative space for that child.
I can go with that then.
I, I know that's, that's not popular with everyone, but that's the.
I wouldn't want a, a, a boy going into, if I had a daughter, going into my daughter's.
I, I think that's the, the eighty-twenty, you know, they talk about eighty-twenty topics, eighty percent of the people across the nation are gonna agree with that.
Well, that being said, UIL's already got something in place, right, that's, that's what stands.
For the protection of that.
They have it in writing, UIL?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, okay, the next thing is the, the grievance regarding statutory rights, uh, you know, in that deal that you're no longer the final say with grievances. That they can't appeal grievances to the commissioner and, you know, I'm sure that Commissioner Moreath is gearing up right now and, and hiring people because he will start to hear boardhold grievances.
And so, that takes, that takes the, the local governing authority away from us because in Austin, they have no idea what the standards are in our community.
No.
No, cause they have their own standards.
Right, and it can be completely different than ours.
I totally agree with you and.
Some districts don't even have the superintendent involved within the process like now.
And, and the policy that is in this book, I would just say that, just be aware that for tomorrow night, uh, we have asked the attorney, the attorney uh reviewed this, he sent it to us. And then he, he looked, remember, you adopted a policy for four steps? And then the attorney looked online and saw three steps and he sent us the three step policy, three level policy. And I emailed him back and I said, hey, Trevor, it's not, that, that, we, we have four steps in this district and so, uh, anyway, the policy that's in the current book today is not the one that we'll have for tomorrow night to be acted on. Four levels, but they can still appeal to the commissioner. So, uh, the next policy is diversity, equity and inclusion. And uh, is prohibiting diversity, e- equity, inclusion and there is a, a policy in here that is, like I said, it's went through Tazby, it's went through our school attorneys and it's on there. Um, look, a- a- at the end of the day, uh, it, it's, it's like I say, the older I get, uh, the good Lord tells us to love thy neighbor. And he didn't tell us what skin color that neighbor should have or from what area that neighbor should be or anything else, he just said, love thy neighbor. And I think if we could get back to that, a whole lot of this stuff would be irrelevant. And uh, you know, we were born the way we were born and God intended us to be and it doesn't matter if you're male or female or whatever, you know, we ought to uh love our kids the way that they're our kids. And, and, and our staff members the same and, and every person, there shouldn't be a boundary or, or an opportunity or a wall that keeps people from doing anything. And there should be no line, there should be an equal playing field for everybody and might the best person win. Because at the end of the day, we have a capitalist society and in a capitalist society, we have people that have to compete for jobs and, you know, you, you line up for a job and I want the best person. When we, we got a, we got an action item here that's you, consent agenda six, you. And I want the person that's flying that plane to Washington DC to be the best possible person that we could get. I don't care if it's a female or a male or anything else, I just want the best, be in the best hands that the good Lord could put us in and so, that, that's what this, I think this, the merit of this policy is and, you know, like I said, we gotta, we. We, we just need to all be prayerful that, that we love each other and when we do that, this policy's really irrelevant anyway, but, you know, I think it, I think it does go in the right direction. Any questions about that? Okay, um, there are, uh, as you heard, uh, Mr. Turner talking about agreements with Tarleton, um, standard stuff is on here with the armed services after school agreement.
I thought they were closed.
I thought they were closed, the Y M C A and Copper's Cove.
No, they're, they're open, uh, Y M C A. I, I passed by them.
They come to the schools.
But they don't have like a Y M C A location then?
They still got the building.
There's a building over there.
Yeah, but it's empty, right?
I, there's a lot of cars outside of it, I don't know.
I see cars.
They're from the beauty shop, I don't, I, I heard they were closed.
But, but this is a different, this is, this is not the Y M C A. This is the armed services aspect.
Armed services, Y M C A.
Well, that's the same thing, though.
No, the money comes from a different pot of money.
Okay.
And, uh.
Yeah, that Y M C A.
There's, uh, white, white buses that go to each campus, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, whether they're picking up for D O D contractors, active servicemen.
Dr. Shuck, you're more experienced than this, you wanna?
Curtis, what's next? So, Y M, Y M C A's staff members, um, for, for and after-school care at elementary. Um, they do not transport students out, uh, or off-campus, it's only before and after-school care. Um, I think they start, they start at six A.M., where parents will be able to drop off, and then they stay until six P.M.
Six P.M., yes. And it's B, it's B-based.
Okay.
I, I, I remember the white buses that come, like the S E Lee, through the bus, they would two pick up kids to go on post, that's what I, I remember. But if they don't do that no more.
That's not it.
That's with Army C Y S.
Yeah.
Oh, it's Army C Y S, not, I'm sure it's Y M C A, okay.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking about.
And then Boys and Girls Above has buses that go to campuses to transport, uh, students to Boys and Girls Above.
Yeah, I knew about that one, yes.
But it's all, this has always been on-campus and not, it's been armed services, Y M C A, not this, not our Y M C A.
Yeah, I think you're right, Cheryl, that one shut down, the one on the corner there.
Yeah.
It is. Thank you.
It's Tony Nino used to be in charge of that.
Page one sixty-seven is the city inter-local agreement with facilities, and I haven't seen any changes to that that would, uh, throw up a flag, I believe, uh, in one seventy-three. Mr. Gores, you had some questions, comments?
Yeah, the S R O program, I, I would like to, uh, one pull from the consent agenda.
I agree with that.
It's, I think it, you know, one, we have our school marshals, right? We have our marshals on all the campuses, and I think it's just, it's time to, to provide that resource back to the city, um, given their challenges across the board, but we have our school marshals, and, uh, I think it's best for the S R Os to go back and, uh, go back and support city operations.
Anything else?
Is there any vacancies regarding school marshals? Are we still hiring, in need of them right now?
Report said, I think there were three.
I saw two or three. Were staffed?
We are not fully staffed for the school marshals.
Because you, you've got some, but they've gotta go to training, right?
Well, we, we had, uh, two resignations, uh, just recently, and so, um, we've made one recommendation, I just received through email another recommendation, um, and so that leaves a little bit of a hold, but we also have four, um, non-uniform marshals, um, that are able to help fill in as, as this.
And, and we also have, for the record, seventeen spots and eleven campuses, so we'll be able to cover. And we'll meet, we'll meet the minimal standard set by the state safety guidelines, is what I'm trying to say.
So why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we taking our S R Os off the campus?
Oh, I, I, he just wanted to pull the agenda, I didn't say we.
Oh, oh, okay.
I should pull the agenda.
Okay, can you give us, uh, wh- what you wanna talk about, or?
Well, bottom line is, I mean, the city's got challenges with their S R, you know, with police officers patrolling the city. We've got marshals across the board, um, and I think it's just a better, a better use of resources at, at the law enforcement officer level, to give them back to the city. If we need L A O operations, then I'm sure we can, they'll respond.
Jimmy, what, can I get your ideas on the S R Os and, and the benefit to, to our high school?
We have to understand the distinct difference between law enforcement and, uh, the marshal program. So, um, our marshals, um, do not act in any law enforcement capability, and so right now, if there is some type of criminal offense that takes place on campus, um, they will assess where, uh, patrol is at, but most of the time, what they do is they, uh, send, uh, one of the S R Os to go respond to campuses because that is a quicker response. Um, we have had times where, if they are busy, um, the response has been a little bit late. And, uh, but our marshals are not able to do any type of law enforcement activity until there is an active threat on campus and when they're given law enforcement responsibilities. Other than that, they're really there for the prevention of an active shooter-type scenario. But as far as kids with T H C vape pens or, uh, T H C fights or all of that, we have to wait, um, and then, uh, we're not able to process them.
Marshals do not do that?
They do not detain, they don't, they don't.
Cuz I know in the past, we talked about, um, a possible, you know, sheriff's deputies taking those jobs, but that didn't come to fruition because I, I know that was talked about, um, in the last couple of years, that idea of maybe doing that instead of the police department, but I've never heard of just totally going away with any kind of law enforcement at the high school. I think that would be pretty scary.
Now, we do use the, the, uh, county sheriff for the, uh, athletic facilities and after-school activities, is that correct?
Um, as, as additional law enforcement?
Yes.
Cuz it, it's always a bit nice to be able to have law enforcement at the athletic events because if they refuse to leave, they can criminally trespass them at, at those times. Um, and, um, if we don't, then we have to, uh, call for the, the police department to come to then criminally trespass, um, somebody there, or if there's, like, like I said, if there's any criminal offense, our marshals really can't do anything about it. And so, we're, we're limited in what they're able to do.
All right, so at our games, do we not have sheriff deputies that work those? Do we not have?
No.
Yeah, yeah, we do, it's the game.
Right, we do, right?
And for that, we get, we get, uh, both the, both the S R Os also as part of our contract, um, that work Friday graduation, they work, um, Friday night home football games, um, Crossroads graduation, they work all of those events, um, as part of their contracted days. They also work summer school. So, our S R Os work summer school, uh, there.
As well as our marshals?
Our marshals only fill in where needed, so we have three summer schools going, or this summer, Crossroads had summer school, so we have four instances of that, so we have two S R Os and two marshals.
So our school marshals, what, what number of day contract do they own?
There were one eighty-seven. So, I'd, I'd have to dig into the, uh, there is a, a, a term period for breaking the contract with them.
It's thirty days.
I think we're already well within that.
All right, I mean.
I just, I would have, I would have a problem not having law enforcement on, on the high school campus. I think it's important, I mean, I, you know, I'm not saying that the campus is wild or crazy or anything like that, but I think that, that things happen, and, and we've got to have law enforcement, we can't, I mean, marshals are great, but they're limited, like Jimmy said.
I think, I think there's a distinct advantage to having an S R O for law enforcement, um, at the high school, especially. Um, we met with Chief Wilson this summer, um, one of the things that we were looking at was, um, splitting up our S R Os and putting one at Coke Junior High, one at the high school. Um, so we're still working through, uh, what that's gonna affect with them, and, um, but,
So who, so who do the S R Os answer to on a daily basis?
Legally? Uh, they would be Chief, uh, Wilson.
Chief Wilson, so they answer, uh, their direct line supervisor is Lieutenant Brewer with the P D, and then Lieutenant Brewer and James Stink, um, speak almost on a daily basis.
I just asked to report for the, the agenda.
I, I know, I just thought when we talked about it, though, you were advocating getting away, I mean, just separating from the, the, the police department.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, I think, you know, and, you know, here's, so, we've had issues, so who's responsible for the, the high school campus?
Well, as far as what?
Legally.
It's the principal, right?
Well, and, uh, you, you've got a person hired that legally, under statute, doesn't report to the high school principal. Matter of fact, they don't report to me. And, uh, there's a, there's a provision, I've, I've went through this before, the, the, the problem is, um, like in my former district, we had a fantastic working relationship, so there was an issue. But when it becomes an issue, then really, Jeff is S R O, Hawke is superintendent, hey, Jeff, I need you to, uh, remove Ms. Cope. I'm not gonna do it. So, I don't report to you.
Yeah, I think.
Really, you report to.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, you know, there's, there's, there's parents out there that are concerned with never being informed of law enforcement actions and law enforcement interactions, of their kids being detained and never being informed. So, um, I mean, you know, we're gonna pull it from the agenda, we can talk more about it tomorrow.
But this is when we talk about a lot of things.
Yeah.
Or I guess the question is, is it detained or questioned? Because typically, if they're detained, um, that's something that they've broken some type of criminal offense, and.
Well, that is the question, because, one.
Yeah, the school will contact, uh, parents, let them know that their child was detained or they were found in, uh, typically, it's either alcohol or marijuana, or if it was, um, I don't, I don't believe they detain them all the time, if there's a, a fight even, um, they may issue them a citation, like the school handler from there.
Well, and I think the, the thing is, is this, I mean, I've been, I, I've, I've been in situations where there's been law enforcement tell principals not, like I'm talking, we had a great relationship in my former district, but I've been in relationships that Jeff would tell me, say, hey, uh, Principal Hawkins, uh, I'm gonna talk to this kid, and you're not gonna stop me, or I'm gonna arrest you, because you're, you're informing.
You're, you're, you're informing.
You're informing an ongoing investigation, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, but you are informed.
Sure.
Right, you are informed, right? And therefore, if a parent asks you, you're gonna tell the parent.
Jeff told me to sit down and be quiet.
Well, unfortunately, I don't think that, I mean, there are parents that, that still has not happened, given the events of last November.
So we, we do have, there is, uh, policy and, and law that dictates that, if law department comes in, um, one of the things that we train our principals on, our administrators on, is they are, are to ask whoever's coming in to question students if, um, they're able to contact a parent, and if the officer gives what, um, they believe to be a viable reason, then we are, we don't contact the parents. And so on the, and that includes, uh, uh, Department of Family and Protective Services. So if D F P S, um, comes on, or they're in the process of conducting a criminal investigation, and they ask us not to contact parents, then we're under that obligation not to contact parents.
Given because they're a victim, or they're the assailant?
They, they don't disclose that information to us, but they are allowed to come on campus to conduct the investigation.
Well, absolutely, as they expect, right? They're not to hinder, it's called, you know, called destruction. We also have, you know, the responsibility to inform parents what's going on. You call questioning, I'll call detaining, right? Because if, if you have a police officer, a law enforcement officer in a room with a kid, all right, because they're all kids that, you know, are under eighteen, and that child, that kid, has not allowed the freedom to leave or inform, that's called detaining, right? You're restraining the freedoms and liberty of that individual.
No, they're, they're, they're not, they're not detaining in that aspect. And in, in Texas, it's seventeen, uh, for criminal, um, so it would be anything that's sixteen or under. But when they go into question, if a kid doesn't answer any questions or, uh, ask to leave, then I believe they're free to do so.
Well, I'm telling you, there's parents that haven't been informed yet, so I haven't, so. That's, that's why.
So.
But that's not the S R Os also, when those investigators come on.
Yeah, those weren't S R Os. That you're talking about, those were, yeah, law enforcement from outside.
This is, yeah, so.
And then the, the question I have, well, it's, it's, uh, it's, is we're budgeting a hundred eighty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-six cents, is that for two or one?
Two.
Because, that's for two? Because when we looked at the budget the other time, I saw the three hundred sixty-thousand something in there, look like on S, on, uh, with C C I S D.
Yeah, that's, that's encompassing more than just, uh, in that contract service, you're, you're talking about that's for two people at that point, but you also are paying them contracted services for games and things like that.
So that's, that, that costs a hundred eighty thousand for two, and you're talking about splitting it between, uh, high school and Coke Junior High, right?
We're in, we're in discussions.
You're in discussions with that, so.
With Chief Wilson, I know about that, that's not been found, right?
So what is it that I need to do for further discussion?
I just think you should break it out from the agenda. I don't think there's any further.
Okay.
Not from my, not from my perspective anyways.
I just didn't know if you needed more information or whatever.
Not from me.
I can follow up with Chief Wilson to see if it would, if they're under, uh, staffing difficulties by having two S R Os for us, if it were the right.
And one final clarification, Jimmy, you said that, uh, taking them out, if, if, if they were gone entirely, the issue is response time, if there's a criminal action, correct? By the Coke P D, to get to that, whatever campus where that issue is happening.
I think the thing that, I mean, the, the thing that, that, that you would have to figure out a path forward on is, we got a vape, and we're gonna test it.
Yeah.
It's got marijuana.
Yeah.
Well, at that point, will they respond? Somebody respond, because that's a criminal.
It's a felony offense.
It's a felony.
Yeah. On school grounds, yeah.
And our, our, and what we're saying is, our guys cannot detain those kids.
They can't write the ticket.
They can't write a ticket, they can't do, do anything at that point. Yeah, I understand, but if you're at the junior high, there's nobody at the junior high anyways.
Well.
And there's nobody at the S E Lee, you know, by the way.
That's true.
Where are the vapes?
Yeah.
The vapes are at elementary school, right? So you got patrol officers all over the city. You got two of them all at downtown high school here, I'm pretty sure they're not gonna be any faster to get to S E Lee or to Copper's Cove Junior High School than a patrol officer. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what the issue is, it, it, you know, if, if we decide not to use the co-police department, the S R Os within C C I S D, the issue is response time when we do have a criminal violation at whatever campus it is, whether it's elementary, high school, one of the junior highs. Well, the only response time, okay, give me, how many, how many, how many arrests at the high school? That's one more clarification, i- i- that's the issue, that's, they're responsive, not, not any. But the response time is only at the high school? Yeah, yeah.
That's just not a service.
Okay, and give me that information, cuz you got, you go to campuses all across the world.
Well, response would be wherever, wherever the criminal act occurred, right?
Correct. So if the patrol unit in that area is otherwise preoccupied, a T H C vape pen may not trump that call, so it could be an hour or two before they get there, and so that ties up district staff, and so what they do is if there is, uh, the S R Os at the high school... And so, what they do is if there is, uh, the SROs at the high school, if it, if it is a low priority and the patrol unit is not able to respond, they will then dispatch an SRO over to that campus to be able to go deal with that situation. So that it doesn't further tie up district staff to be with that kid.
Anything else on that, Adam?
Okay, item O is a Lasso grant, that's a seven hundred thousand dollar grant. However, part of those TDA grants is, is that you have to have a third-party vendor in the loop. Those third-party vendors cost a lot of money. As you can see, that four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is to education elements. Amanda has worked with education elements before and is comfortable with them. Any questions on the Lasso? Okay, P, the student code of conduct. You have to approve that each year, and as you know, there's been some re, substantial rewrite, check thirty-seven, Texas Education Code. That's all in here for your reading. For example, vapes no longer are mandated, that those students have to go to DAP and do ten days of ISS and intervention. There are now students that can be suspended, that in the past was not suspended. There are students now that, from the standpoint of homeless, so and so forth, that in the past could not be removed from certain segments of class, that now the teacher has more leverage to remove that student, and a committee has to look at those students before they're placed back into the classroom. And so, I do think that it is, this change is a good step back towards some control. Because we had swung the pendulum so far that the toolbox for dealing with consequences on discipline was empty. And today, professionally, I believe, and personally, both, that students need to understand consequences. That we, that we got way too far away from that. In the state of Texas, it, it happened about six years ago. And, and the first step was decriminalizing truancy. And, and then it just continued to bubble from there. There were no more Class C misdemeanors that you could write on campuses. And the next thing you know, we've looked up and Texas Education Agency has said that we cannot put kids in ISS for greater than three days. And so, everything that we had was just eroding away as far as tools to deal with consequences. And so, this is a good step back to put some things in place to affect the climate of schools across the state and give tools to deal with students who are incorrigible or in some cases dangerous. So-
So, is that regardless if they carry a 504 or IDE?
No, it does not trump state law, I mean, federal law. State law does not trump federal law. And so, those students still have protections under 504 and IDEA.
Yeah.
And so, you know, but there is a committee of people that should be making decisions with those students that have functional behavior intervention plans.
Correct.
And the other thing is this, is just because that you do have federal protection, that does not mean there's no consequences. And that you can walk back, you know, if you've got a functional BIP in place and a student does-
Trying to manifest, manifest if they, he or she did that.
If, if we're all in the classroom together and Matt has special needs and he is doing things that's dangerous to himself or others here, then he can be removed from that environment and placed in a more restricted environment. You know, Matt, Matt's needs did not trump all of our rights either, you know? There is rights that everybody in the classroom has. But there is a process in place to protect, make sure that we don't trump Matt's rights as well. So, any questions about changes to the code? Okay, Q is normal, it's on there every year. R is something that we need to have some conversations about. You may have ideas today that you wanna add it to this agenda, or you may want to kick it down the road to another agenda, there's no sense of urgency on that. But we do need conversations about all of our processes in place. We've done a lot of things, we, we, we've, we have had workshops and revamped our board operating procedures. We have board planning calendars, we have board meeting calendars, we have board monitoring calendars. And, and we have board goals that you have on the table there that you've adopted, that's on our website. And, and so, kind of the next step is superintendent constraints. And generally, in that process, there's a couple of things that you as a board wanna make sure that, and in this case, it didn't necessarily that, you know, you think a constraint is, well, Dr. Hawkins, don't do that. That's not, that's not really what it is. What you're saying is, is that this is important to us. It's not a goal, but this is important to us. And we don't want to take a step backwards on it. So, don't, don't let this go backwards. And like I say, you, you can have thought about this and we can put it on another agenda, or you may have two things that all of you can come to consensus on today. But, but for an example, your superintendent constraints may be, Dr. Hawkins, do not let the eighth grade class go backwards ten percent on the TSIA test. And another one might be, one of the superintendent constraints might be that, Dr. Hawkins, you need to make sure that X number of walkthroughs are done on campuses to ensure fidelity of instruction. And so, it, a constraint can be anything. It's just, it's giving the administration a guardrail to make sure that we stay in the road, that we don't get so focused on a goal that we run over here in the ditch and something else. That you hold valuable as a trustee doesn't happen.
So, to do that, 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 I mean, we can talk about constraints, but we actually need to sit down and discuss what we want as those constraints.
You know, it, there's generally no more than two, so you have to reach a consensus. Because if you got ten, then all of a sudden, you're old, you know, you got, yeah, you wig out. So, you know, one, one strategy may be just each of you come up with a constraint and write it down and give it to Joan, and then she kind of compile a list. And then, you know, at, at a, at a future meeting, you know, we can talk about it in more depth. You can, you know, Joan may get seven different constraints, and two of them may be the same, there may only be five. And then, at the next meeting, Joan can say, hey, here's the constraints that we have, and you can walk through the five of them that's on there. And then, you know, say, okay, then the top two's the ones that we, we wanna put into, you know, a direct-
Again, just like the goals. Okay.
Questions about that? Okay, S is the resolution for Williams Ledger that we talked about earlier. T is appointing the delegate to Tasby and the alternate to Tasby.
That's for September.
Yes.
Jeff, you still wanna do that?
I'll go.
Would anybody like to be a alternate?
I was like Joan was, weren't you?
It's, it's, unfortunately, it's on the eleventh, and we've got something going on the eleventh here, don't we, Amanda?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so I could not go down that night, because it's something that I've been working with the district. I don't wanna miss that.
Anybody else?
We won't be here.
Do both of them have to go, go Jeff?
No.
No, no. No, it's just somebody, Jeff can't go.
If he can.
Oh, okay. It's, it's important to have an alternate though, because sometimes-
Yeah.
Could you be an alternate? Okay.
But as an alternate, I mean, I went last time as an alternate, right? And I said, good, it's, for the actual action date, right?
If you can, if you can make it, that would be great, just to see what's going on. But if you can't, let Jeff know you're not coming. And of course, you need to let Monica know a couple of days in advance, so she does, so we don't pay for a hotel room.
Right.
And then the last consent agenda item there is you, and that's the out of straight-
Out of straight.
Out of straight, Na, Nafrish, Nafris trip.
Now, if we don't get impact aid money, why do we still go to this?
We do, we do get it.
We do get it, sure?
About three million down.
Oh, okay.
We got three million this year.
Oh, that's great.
And so, it's-
Yeah, but what's, what's that term called, when they, it's revised, right? It's-
I don't remember what the name of it is.
It's from, it's from previous years.
Payback.
Yeah, that's what they call it, payback.
Retroactive?
No.
No, it's, it's something that didn't pay us before, they held it back, percentage, and then they pay you.
They find out they have more, and so they, and it can happen anytime.
Yeah. It's years behind, right?
From years to years, that's how they, they don't, they don't-
I wonder why I think it's retroactive, it's what's owed to you no matter what.
Yeah, I hope so.
No.
It's not forward, I don't want it.
Out of that, and then have, have to restart all over.
Yeah, we've been before, where if we hadn't been there, they would've-
That's right.
Cut us out completely.
Really is.
Yes. So, it isn't, it's an important thing to go to, it is.
Now, how come the call for the bond isn't on here?
It's on tomorrow.
It's on tomorrow.
It's on the regular agenda, you can see it on there, okay.
It's E, F, and G, I believe, under action items.
So, before we go to action items, let's take a break. It's been a while, I know people may need to take a bathroom break. And we'll come back just as quick as you can, and then we'll go through the action items.
Can I tell y'all, y'all on that side, I can't, with that sun over there, I can't see y'all.
Tell me for shade.
Yeah, I mean, it's in that door there, I can see Dr. Hawkins better because he's in front of that brick. But I can't, yeah, I think we need to lose up, yeah. And I hate, but it's just hard to, uh-
Are we going into glaze?
Yes.
And that way, if there is an emergency, then we don't have twenty-three hundred phones locked locked up in pouches to worry about. We need to be worried about kids if there's an emergency. Now, that is a campus-wide emergency that is invoked by the administration on that campus due to some type of issue to where we invoke our protocols. That does not mean that one child has an emergency and can whip out their phone and call their parent. That this law and policy, eh, when we're talking about emergencies, the individual emergency, eh, is not a campus emergency. So, campus emergencies are different. I- i- in the old days, just like fixing to be here on Thursday, if a kid needs to, needs something, they go down to the office and they call their parent, just like in the old days. Their parent can call in and leave a message and that, and that receptionist can get that information to that child. Eh, as long as you don't call five minutes before the bell rings for the end of the day for the kid to, supposed to ride the bus and you, and the kid thought you were picking them up. I mean, you gotta give them some time, you know, by two o'clock, if it's a transportation deal, then our office needs to be contacted. But that kind of walks through all of that. It is. When the kid walks in the building, the phone needs to be, phone needs to be put away. Walks out of the building, they can power back up. And e- e- every point during the time that that kid is in the building, whether it's lunch or passing periods or any of that, out of sight, we don't see it, we don't hear it. And then, you know, for those who just want to try the system, there is a, a, a s- i- in this policy, you can read through there. There's two basic warnings where the phone's confiscated and the kid can pick it up. We're not in the profit business, we're not trying to make money. Okay, we're not charging them fifteen or twenty-five dollars to pick up the phone. But, but they will have to come get it eh, toward the close of the next business day, twenty-four hours. Then it's forty-eight hours. And then on the third offense, we start invoking consequences in the student code, eh, kind of. And so, you start the ISS, two days, three days, five days, and then possibly DAP. And hopefully, we have some interventions in place in there. But I think that's fair to kids. I think it's not a deal where they get just hammered on the first offense. Eh, but it, but it, but it is complying with the letter of the law, the intent of the law. And eh, and we all need to understand that the teachers and the staff members on those campuses didn't create this law. And so, you know, parents or students don't need to hassle or harass the teachers. And the implication from the staff is this, you don't have any discretion over whether you comply with law or policy.
That's correct.
And, and so, this isn't one of those deals where a staff member can be an independent contractor and sit out here and say, ah, I don't really agree with that. Doesn't matter if you agree with it or not. It's like a whole lot of stuff in my life I don't agree with, but you know what? We're gonna make the best of it. And so, that's what students, staff, community needs to do. Eh.
Do you think they understand that yet?
Well, I think people are trying.
They will. I think eh, after the first, the first week's gonna be.
Yeah.
A book trial.
And, and so.
For the majority, I mean, there's a lot of vitriol out there, right? There's a lot of vitriol, but guess what? You know, student Jeff and student John, instead of sitting here and texting each other, we're gonna have to, hey, how'd your day go today, right? You're gonna have to engage verbal and nonverbal communication.
Big step.
Huh?
It's a big step.
It's huge. For some, it's huge, right? You're gonna have, you know, what, what are we gonna do at lunch, huh? Play cards, jacks, whatever the case may be, right?
You know, one of the things I think, I, I don't know if we've put it out or not, but to combat the eh, misinformation that's been put out, particularly on social media about the fact that you can have the twenty passing period and you can do this and this at lunch. We need to make sure that, that we put out something that says, this is what the law is.
Well, we are. Curtis has a campaign, eh, and, and he's gonna push marketing stuff out for that. I just think though, that, that exactly what you're saying, Mr. Wilburn, is, is so true. That, that digital citizenship is very important. And we've got a generation, or multiple generations out there, that really didn't learn di- digital citizenship. I mean, we've got folks out there that learned typing in school.
Yeah.
And not digital citizenship.
I did too.
I did, I did. It was. Yes, we, we had typing, we didn't, we didn't have computers in school and so, eh, and, and so, they don't understand digital citizenship. So, the next generation of Texans, we need to make sure that they understand that. Make sure that you look at things through an objective eye. Because there are news sources that aren't, they don't have the validity in which you need to put trust in them. And you need to have o- objectivity, you know, this isn't Walter Cronkite, you know, that's sitting here telling America what the news is. And so, especially when in, in regards to social media, when we got social media sitting here, you know, anybody with an account can get on there and say anything. So, it's important that we're teaching kids and our parents today that there are, eh, there are valid s- segments of, of social media or media that, that they can turn to and feel like that they can put their trust in it. The eh, Copper's Cove ISD social media page, if there's something on there that, hey, we're canceling school or something, it, it's, it's probably valid. If you go to Hot Topics and we cancel school, probably, you better look somewhere else. Don't stop there. And so, anyway, Curtis has got a deal. Curtis, you wanna tell them kind of what your plan is there?
Yeah, um, based on our conversations about the policy, then we outlined it in the podcast last week as well. Eh, kind of a way for the day, I'm modeling the messaging off of what I've seen some other districts doing that's been effective. Eh, and Arlington ISD called it a way for the day and outlined it kind of explicitly like y'all are, are saying. That no headphones, no personal laptops, no personal tablets. And then, eh, we'll follow that social media side up with an e- eh, an email directly to parents to reach out to them directly and go a little bit more in-depth than what social media allows as well.
And you're also putting signs up in the schools.
I have graphics already produced that I can easily manipulate into a poster. And first thing Wednesday morning, we can get those printed and the four of us in communications can run them, eh, put, run them around the campuses so that they're here before the students arrive Thursday.
You know, most of us in here, in this room, we didn't get six chances.
Well, you don't, you don't, you don't in here either.
What, six, the six violations?
Yeah, but remember, what's the worst thing that can happen to some kids today? Because guess what? There are a lot of households that mom and daddy don't take that phone away.
Oh, yeah.
Don't do that again. Mike, don't, don't you do that again.
Or next time I'm going to.
But if your daddy told you that, if, if you were lucky for him to tell you that, the next time, you just probably fixed to get some sparks off your noggin.
No, the first time.
So, so, but yeah, I think the first two things in there is punitive to where that, we don't really see it as punitive, but I think it'll be punitive for the kid.
Unless they got a couple phones.
The good thing about this is, you know, just hearing from other states that have already enacted this, eh, they found their, you know, attention of the kids.
What Jeff said, the, the.
You know.
Kids in, in lunch, they start talking to one another.
Yeah, and, and plus, in, in the classrooms, there are more.
Interaction.
There's more interaction and more learning going on. And so, that's so positive.
And that same report, Trump said bullying was down too.
Right.
Because there's a lot of cyberbullying on that. But you talk about digital responsibility, but a lot of those parents, I guarantee, they get in that car, they're doing this. Sure, too. And, you know, you, you can't affect that, but you teach the kids that. If the kids do, if the kids learn that the, hey, don't do that, we might have a few less accidents too. Because, you know, those folks, and of course, you see the signs around and says, don't text and drive at the same time. Eh, but eh. Now, the question is, marshals can take away those phones from the kids too if they see a violation, right?
Anybody can take the phone away, you know, now if they refuse, if a kid refuses to, then it's gross insubordination.
Okay.
And so, if it's gross insubordination, then it goes to a point on the student code. Yeah, that's not an option.
All right. The last two items are about the fields.
And we've, we've kind of went over that already, so unless there's any additional questions, then I'm not gonna burn your time on that.
So, they think they can, if we prove this tomorrow night, then they can get started on it.
Yep. October first is the drop dead date, so, you know, eh, August the.
But by January, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what you, and that's what we said before, January, right?
Yeah.
To be read, yes.
Yeah.
Cool.
All right, we are going to go into closed session, eh, in accordance with the Texas Department of Defense Act, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven-four Personnel Matters. And since we just had a break, we probably won't need one, so if you'll just meet in Dr. Hawkins' office, please. We'll go from there.
He's special.
Yeah, he really is.
Somehow I deleted Uglinet as my friend. I say, where am I deleting a lot of people?
Okay, well go ahead and...
Here we go.
Four o'clock on the dot.